The item on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Alderman Randolph.
Here.
Alderman, Alderwoman Bibbs.
Here.
Alderman Hartman.
Here.
Alderman Runions.
Here.
Alderman Maloney.
Here.
Alderman Rousey. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The next item is Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our men and women in harm's way, our public safety employees, as well as those that are being negatively impacted by all the disasters down in the state of Mississippi as well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. The next item we have is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any discussions? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So tonight's agenda has been approved. The next area is the approval of the minutes from the regular session on March 14th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion to approve the regular session minutes from March 14th, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the regular session minutes from March 14th, 2023 have been approved. The next section is awards presentation organizational business, and I'm going to jump down to item C and then come back to item B. So is there a motion for the reappointment to the zoning board of adjustments and the appointment to the planning commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ron Pearson to the zoning board of adjustments. It's a reappointment, a five-year term that expires on May 1st, 2028, and an appointment to Joe Kump that would begin a four-year term on May 6th that would expire on July 1st of 20...
April 6th.
Oh, April, April 6th. That would expire on July 1st, 2027.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Oh, and the tax increment finance. Do I need to do the April 6th again on that?
For a four-year term.
Yeah. April 6th for a four-year term that would expire on October 22nd, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will swear them in accordingly. So now let's go back to item B, proclamation to recognize Grandview Boys Wrestling Team that went to state. And when I wrestle, I didn't go to state. I wrestled in a 132 weight class, and it was hard for me to get out of district or conference, not to mention go to state. So this is, this is definitely an honor, so we will recognize them as well. So what we have here... A certificate of recognition for the awesome Grandview Wrestling individuals that made it to state. And it says as... Oh, this is pretty good. We even have the coach in here as well. So our state individuals, please come up, and we can, we can do this differently. Let's stand over here, and we'll take pictures over there. Mike, we'll take a picture with you as well. Where's mom and dad and family members and family grandparents? Come on up, guys. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Yes? Well, that's okay. We're going to still recognize them. Why don't you guys stand right over here with the board of aldermen? You've got to stay here, okay? You've got to stay here too. Yeah. But, yes. All right. So, so it's always good to see what goes on, but needless to say, for wrestlers to be wrestlers, you have to have mom, dad, and grandparents, and aunts and uncles, and cousins, and everybody else participating. So that's, it is truly a participatory sport, and we appreciate that. And I asked Michael when he came up, I says, "Well, can you do the moonwalk?" Because last time I saw him, last week, he had a boot on. And now you don't have a boot on anymore. So that's a good thing. So could you do the moonwalk before? But don't, don't answer that. That's okay. This is certificate of recognition, Grandview Boys Wrestling Team presented in recognition of the members of the Grandview High School Wrestling Team for competing in the 93rd Boys Missouri State High School Association Wrestling Championships. The state championship event was held at Mizu Arena in Columbia, Missouri on February 22nd through the 25th, 2023. Juniors Derek Joyner and Michael Wilson, which is hard to say, Michael's a junior. I remember, I can go way back, but yes, it's just amazing to say he's a junior. And it's, it's important that we had some awesome coaches, and we have Dennis, Bo, and Maxwell, the coaches that helped these guys achieve so much. So we appreciate your efforts as well. On behalf of the Board of Aldermen and citizens of the city of Grandview, we thank you for making Grandview proud and for nurturing the sportsmanship and talents of our community's youth sports. So, thank you, sir, as well. We're going to make sure that your cohort also gets a certificate. Stand over there and coach us. Thank you. And again, thank you, guys. Let's stand over here and take pictures because we are grateful for what you have accomplished and will continue to accomplish. Thank you. Michael, any words of wisdom you want to share?
Don't get your ankle broken.
Well, that would be, that would be a good name by itself, but anything else? Absolutely. My coach is still in the city, my resident coach. And, yeah, you remember those wrestling coaches because they teach me so much. So what an opportunity. So congratulations and ask for... How's that? Okay?
You know, I try to do that.
So guys, we want to say thank you for what you have accomplished, and as you continue to work through, we are here to support you in every way possible. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And make sure you tell Coach. I appreciate it, all right? Oh, okay, the track meet. There's a lot of folks out there.
Yeah.
Yes. Good. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Joe, you ready? Joe? Come on up. Patty, come on up. Patty? Patty? That's Julie right there. Why don't you give your camera to Julie? She'll take a picture. Yes. Joe, come on up, sir. Patty, come on up. Yes, right here. Good scene. Okay.
You solemnly swear that this is important constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri, and that all the laws of the state is effective to the citizens in the fourth class, and in order to serve the city faithfully discharge all the people who are in your office, and faithfully leave yourself in the office to the union of the citizens.
I'm sorry.
That's right. You did. You did. And you need to sign down there. Yes, take a picture of those two for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Becky wants you to sign right there. And Ron is not, was not able to make it today, but we will definitely get him sworn in as well. But Joe, even though it does not start until the 6th, when they have the meeting on the 5th, you can definitely sit in on that meeting. It's, it's open meeting, so you can easily sit in on the meeting, and I'll be there as well. But, yes, it's effect, you will be effectively sitting with the planning commissioners and the TIF commission on the 6th. Okay? Thank you very much. Sure, appreciate it. The next item we have is public comment, and this is an opportunity for any, anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board of Aldermen to step up to the mic, state their name and address, and do sign in after they have finished speaking. And everybody has three minutes to address the Board of Aldermen. So the time is 7:13. I declare public comment open. Anyone would like to stand up and address the board? No one has presented themselves. At 7:13, I declare public comment closed. We have no public hearings. Next item is consent items. Is there a motion for consent items D through G?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion to approve consent items D through G.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So consent items D through G have been approved. The next section is ordinances, and the first bill is bill number 7685. So is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion to put bill number 7685 on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Bill number 7685, an ordinance approving a planned district conceptual development plan for the construction of a single-family home and accessory structure at 14900 Kelly Road in Grandview, Jackson County, Missouri.
Good. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7685 be placed on the second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I'll second.
Bill number 7685, an ordinance approving a planned district conceptual development plan for the construction of a single-family home and accessory structure at 14900 Kelly Road in Grandview, Jackson County, Missouri.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7685 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7427.
So bill number 7685 has passed. It is now ordinance 7427. And Becky, could you move that up for us?
Well, sure.
Thank you. Is there a motion for bill number 7686?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion that bill number 7686 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Runions.
I second the motion.
Bill number 7686, an ordinance approving a new agreement with Wayside Waves Incorporated for Animal Shelter and Care Services.
Thank you. Is, have any staff here who want to speak on that? Yes, we do. We've got a president, and you can come on up. You can, just, just have a seat right there, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Before you is, again, bill 7686 for executing a new contract with Wayside Waves for reasonable care, feeding of animals brought to the city. We have been working with Wayside Waves for a number of years. First, entering into contract with Wayside Waves in 2009. A new contract was executed with Wayside Waves in 2015, and we are now here before you for the execution of a new contract. This new contract is largely the same as our previous contract. There are a few minor changes. I would say kind of the largest change are around the fees associated with the services being provided by Wayside Waves. As you can imagine, with the changes that they have made to their facility over the past couple of years, and just the general cost increases in providing these services, those fees did need to increase. They are consistent with the fees that are being paid by other municipalities that contract with Wayside Waves for these same services. And so we're hoping that the board will approve this contract so we can continue to move forward in what has been a very productive and fruitful relationship between the city of Grandview and Wayside Waves.
Well, I see you brought Madam President with you.
Yes.
And it's, it's good to have you. Is there anything you would like to add as well? Let everybody else know your name first so that...
I'm Katherine Mahoney, president of Wayside Waves. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the partnership with the city of Grandview. I think it has been a very fruitful relationship for both parties. And our, our fees have increased. I would say that our operating costs since the last time that we renewed the agreement have increased about 49%. And the increases to the contract certainly do not reflect that high of an increase. We understand that the city has a budget as well that it has to adhere to. But I just appreciate the relationship.
Good. So just so everybody's aware, there's a difference between Katherine Maloney and Katherine Mahoney. Just so there's, there's, there's a strict difference between the two. So, good. Any questions from the board members? We've got, you know, our department head here as well as Madam President. Any, any questions for them?
Mayor?
Yeah.
I just, I just thank you for being here, and you're, you're really blessing, and you've done a lot for Grandview over the, I know you're probably not here that long tenure, but we are, I think we're really pleased to have you so, so close here. We can use your facilities. You know, I've, I've always heard good things about you, so.
Thank you.
She was a CFO, and she got demoted to, I mean promoted to CEO. Glad to have you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Here.
Alderman Runions.
No. I'm just kidding, Becky. Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7686 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second the motion.
Bill number 7686, an ordinance approving a new agreement with Wayside Waves Incorporated for Animal Shelter and Care Services.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7686 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I'll second that.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
You kind of got messed up on the beginning.
I did.
Yes, you did.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7428.
So bill number 7686 has passed. It is now ordinance 7428. And so, thank you both. We appreciate it, and I look forward to where we go with the relationship. So thank you. Next item is bill number 7687. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7687 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
I'll second.
Bill number 7687, an ordinance approving a contract with Arrowhead Guys Lawn Care LLC as a contractor for mowing services of city-owned and land trust lots.
Thank you. And I see Sarah has stepped up here as well, so is there any additional input you guys want to give us?
So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Randy Dunn, Director of Community Development. Again, this is a much-needed contract for mowing of city-owned and land trust lots to help as we enter into the growing season, to help ensure that we're maintaining a safe and healthy community that continues to be vibrant and thriving, and in being able to make sure that we're able to mow these lots that will help us in achieving that goal. This is, again, a much-needed contract after an exhaustive process, and I must give a big kudos to Sarah who sits here to my left, who has done an incredible amount of work over the past year in compiling information and helping us get to this point where we are today with these contracts. And so again, this will be a contract with Arrowhead Guys Lawn Care, who was our, our best and most responsible bid we received for these services. And so this contract will not exceed $35,520. And again, we hope that the board will approve the execution of this contract today.
Sarah, anything else you'd like to add?
No, just thank you. It was a pleasure to serve on this project.
And needless to say, Sarah has been working on this for a long time. This has been her, her baby as she's been birthing it.
It evolved to this, yes.
Yes. Good. Any comments or questions from the board?
Mayor.
Alderman Runions.
On the land trust, and I know some of this stuff, some spots, Grandview's been maintaining it for 30 or 40 years, probably. Is any way we can force that into sale and put it to good use?
For, for the land trust lots, those are lots that are not owned by the city, so we would not be able to force the sale of those. Those are technically owned by Jackson County, so it would be under their purview to dispose of those lots as they see fit.
So do we need to put pressure on the county?
Yes, yes.
I know with, with the land banks, they're supposed to be, tried to be moved pretty quickly if they can, but some of this, the one over here on High Grove, I think it's been there forever.
I think you're right. I don't even remember a house ever being on that land, so.
So, if, if you can find out, you know, you may have to work with the city attorney. We need to move some of these out of them.
Alderman Runions, I may remind you...
Put them to good use.
I may remind you that we do assess the, the costs of mowing to the lots, and it becomes an encumbrance on the lot. So if the lot does ever sell, then we do get reimbursed at that point when it would occur. Like, like was mentioned, we don't sell a lot of them just because a lot of times they're infill type of properties, but I know the land trust does try to move them because it's basically an encumbrance that they have.
Further discussion? Roll call. Oh, Alderman Hartman?
Just a quick question. Where, where is this Arrowhead Guys located at? I read, I read through it, but I didn't...
Their address, they are in Raymore, Missouri, 1504 Horseshoe Drive, Raymore, Missouri.
Okay, Randy. And then, once we send them the, the order to do that, how many, how quick do they respond? I mean, do, do we know this is a new company with us, right? But is it, do they have a certain amount of days to get it done, or?
Alderman Hartman, only for the land trust lots because those are handled differently. The, the, the city lots and the fire stations, this company actually mows Fire Station 1 and has had a very solid...
Yeah.
Working relationship. And the owner grew up in Grandview, so he, he has a connection to the community.
And as far as the timeline, the plan is for all city-owned lots to be on a set schedule weather permitting. For the land trust lots, since we do not own those lots, the process that we'll have to go through before those lots can be mowed, the grass, per state statute, once they reach seven inches in height, we will send Jackson County a notice to, to mow, assuming that, or excuse me, Jackson County to mow. Assuming that does not happen, then they have 10 days to abate that. If that does not happen, then we will issue a work order to the contractor to, to mow those lots at that time.
And that's the way it's been, Kurt had it, I mean...
Yes, that's correct. And the contract specifies they have three business days to, to finish the, after notified by city staff to abate the issue.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call then.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alder, Alderman Maloney, sorry.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7687 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second the motion.
Bill number 7687, an ordinance approving a contract with Arrowhead Guys Lawn Care LLC as a contractor for mowing services of city-owned and land trust lots.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7687 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Runions.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7429.
So bill number 7687 has passed. It is now ordinance 7429. And again, thank you, Sarah, for all of the hard work you put on this one. So I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Next is ordinance 7688. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7688 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second the motion.
Bill number 7688, an ordinance approving a contract with Horizon Lawn and Landscape for private lots or city rights of way.
Thank you. Any discussion or any updates you want to give us first?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Again, for the record, Randy Dunn, Director of Community Development. Again, want to give a big kudos to Sarah for all of her work getting us to this point with this contract as well. This contract with Horizon Line Lawn and Landscape is for trash removal and public nuisance, nuisance abatement. Again, very much needed contract. We have been without a contract for trash abatement for some time now, and so this will allow us to be able to clear up many of these problem sites that we have around the city. And this contract is not to exceed $25,000. And again, very much needed, and I hope that the board will approve this contract as well.
Thank you. Sarah, anything you'd like to add?
No, I just echo, uh, everything that Rand...
So this is the Randy Dunn Show tonight, huh? Is that, is that what? I, I see a pattern here.
As it should be.
Awesome. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
On this contract, they just pick up the trash, right? They don't do any mowing?
That is correct.
They just pick it up and leave?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is really when sometimes a lot of appliances or things are out, and they stay out there for a long time, and email messages and phone calls come out. At this point in time, they'll be contacting these individuals as well.
Yeah, and that, that's what I was asking, if, if they mowed, sometimes when they mow and trash, they just trash everywhere, goes everywhere, you know, instead of picking the trash up first. So, I guess if you have the grass that was tall and the appliances laying around, then, then our other contractor would come in and mow it, uh, without scattering trash all over, everything. You see what I mean?
That is certainly our hope, and our, the previous contract that, that we discussed for the mowing abatement does have in their language as relates to removal of trash for the purpose of being able to mow those lots. So, if there are small items and paper and those sorts of things, it would be our expectation that they would remove those items, so they aren't mowing trash and creating a, a bigger risk.
Right, because a lot of times down the highway, you know, the highway will mow, and they, they don't pick trash up, they just mow, you know, then you get little bitty pieces of trash.
Yes.
So...
Good point. Any further discussion? Yes.
This just ordinary, small items, it doesn't, it isn't going to include some of our big items that, that are probably coming through lawsuits and that. That'll be a different situation. I think there's a one over here on, uh, Robinson Pike. That's not included in this, is it?
It, it, potentially. It, it depends on the scale, uh, so some things may be, we may, depending upon the scale of the cleanup that is needed, it may require us to go to bid for some of those much larger, uh, sites. Uh, some of these, uh, some of those sites, they may be able to handle within, uh, this contract. Uh, and then also, um, obviously, we also have our NSOs who will continue to do their work, and so we will be using these contractors for, um, uh, materials and things that are larger, uh, in nature than our NSOs can, can handle and/or that our existing trucks are able to, to handle as well.
Yeah, and there, there's some others that I wouldn't, don't want to mention, but that are larger items.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And dangerous buildings, uh, cases and so forth, that's totally different and separate because that's going up under, uh, a whole new set of rules and regulations.
That is correct.
So, yeah. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Uh, Randy, the contract will specify what can and cannot be removed. Is that correct? And it won't be any additional cost, uh, to the city?
That is correct. And the contractor, they will not, um, they have to receive a work order from the Community Development Department before they're, uh, to do any work, uh, and so that way, they would know exactly what it is we are expecting them to go out and clean up because that would be specified in that work order.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Would a bill number 7687 be placed on its second reading? Oh, seventy-six eighty-eight, sorry. Be placed on its second reading.
Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Runions.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Bill number 7688, an ordinance approving a contract with Horizon Lawn and Landscape for private lots or city rights of way.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Would a bill number 7688 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second the motion.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7430.
So bill number 7688 has passed, is now ordinance 7430. And again, Randy and Sarah, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The next area is other business, and we're going to start with Alderman Maloney. Any other business you have?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I had two items here. This Thursday, the, uh, school district is having a State of the District luncheon, uh, State of Education.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's going to be happening on Thursday, if anybody wants to attend that. And then one other piece of news, the Grandview Assistance Program is going to be temporarily moving, uh, starting this Saturday at nine AM. We're going to have a temporary location for the next three and a half months or so at the corner of Grandview Road and Main Street at nine hundred Main. It's the old Grandview Medical Plaza Building. So we're going to be there while the, uh, our current building is being remodeled, so we've got some, some good news about that, but, uh, we will, we are not leaving the area and our services will, uh, definitely not skip a beat during that process.
Good. Alderwoman Bibbs, anything?
Uh, no, ma'am.